Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Common Council Meeting of Thursday, March 19. Everyone is checked in except Mrs. Spears and Mr. Handler are absent. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item C, public comment. At this time, the mayor will recognize members of the public who have indicated their desire to address the council upon recognition by the mayor. Persons may address the council from the podium, first stating their name and address. The council may take action on emergency matters introduced by members of the public. Anyone from the public wish to address the council? Anyone from the public? Final call. We'll go on to item D. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the March 10, 2020 Common Council meeting? A motion by Mr. Fire, second by Mr. Jockick. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. And motion carries eight to zero. Item E, any staff updates?
Yes, just one. There's been some requests in the past, and it bubbled up again recently to look at possibly having options for members of this body to participate remotely. And, you know, we have situations like this where people are out of town and would like to still be part of the meeting. We don't have anything in policy right now that would allow that. Talked to the city attorney a little bit about that. There may be some options we're exploring. So know that as we go forward in the next, you know, few weeks, we'll examine that, see if there's something we can put in place that would be good in terms of meeting the requirements, the expectations of the public being able to participate the way public meetings are supposed to be trans, you know, occurring. And we'll get back to this body at that time.
All right. Anything further? Staff updates? Item E, Mayor's comments. Let's see, employee recognition. Philip Schmidt, Street Division, April 5, 2020, 10 years. And I just want to give a brief update to the council on some things that have gone on in regarding to the virus that's going around. First of all, for a lot of information, you can go to our website. Our communication department has done a fabulous job of keeping it up. And the website there, the page goes to all the local areas. So the fire department, police department, to the clinic, to the United Way. It's a great landing spot for everything, and there's constant updates there. As of this, today, just before we came in, there's a total of 155 total confirmed cases in the state of Wisconsin. The closest one to us is in South Wood County. And so they are continuing to, continuing to test, and I'm sure those numbers will increase. You may remember when we had our council meeting, what was it, eight days ago, there was three. And so, so it has grown. Fortunately for us here in Wood County, there's only one, and that person was traveling. We've had a lot of meetings, starting on Sunday, and this is a great collaboration, what's going on within the city. Steve and I were there, the fire department, the police department, representative from the clinic, from the Marshfield School District, from Columbus Schools, Mackey was there representing the businesses, the United Way, the YMCA, and many of our faith-based partners as well. It'd probably interest you to know that at the high school yesterday, I believe they did 630 breakfasts and lunches for people that are coming there. So, and the United Way has done a fabulous job of getting food to people. So, we are in constant contact with all the different areas here within the city. I'm very, very proud of that. They really have done a great job, and they are working tirelessly on that. And the final thing is tomorrow, there is a sense of urgency. I'm sure you've felt it within the community. There's a bit of anxiety. Of course, this is all unknown, and there's also, many of our workers have just, they're off. And they have no PTO, they have no, they're just kind of off. And so tomorrow, I'll be meeting with members of our financial community and also members of our faith-based community to try to coordinate, is there a way possible, and we don't know, we're going to have a meeting to maybe get some relief in both areas, both financial and help with the anxiety. So that will go on tomorrow, and hope, and we'll see where that leads us. Basically, what we want to know is the citizens of Marshfield to know that we are taking this very seriously, very aggressive. We're not waiting for anything. We're, we are moving as quickly as we possibly can. That being said, item G, any council comments? Mr. Jockick.
Going to ask regarding city staff. Have we had any impact? Staff not working, laid off? What's the status of Street Division, that kind of thing?
Yeah, I'm going, I've got on the agenda later on, the, to talk about some things going on with the COVID-19 pandemic, and run some things past council, get you caught up to date, ask for some potential authorization, and I'll cover all that at that time.
Any further comments from the council? Seeing none, we'll go to item H. Any reports from commissions, boards, or committees? Seeing none, we'll go on to item I, the consent agendas, or a motion to receive and place and file approving all recommended actions within the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Butky, a second by Mr. Fire, and a, Mr. Bargender. Hit the red button. There we go. All right. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries eight to zero. Item K, first reading of ordinance number 1429, request to annex territory owned by Macau LLC in the city of Marshfield, including a request for RH 35 rural holding zoning related to a petition for direct annexation for two parcels and road right-of-ways consisting of 84.91 acres to be detached from the town of McMillan and annexed to the city of Marshfield, located to the north of State Highway 97 and east of Hamas Nature Preserve, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. The agenda item pretty much covers most of it, and we've talked about this item before at council. The, the last time we were discussing, we had the council refer this item to Plan Commission for a recommendation on zoning. It's about an 84-acre property that has, right now, just basically one single-family home on there with no residence, but otherwise, it's mainly farmland. And then there is the city, city owns a parcel for a well in the middle of it. And so, petitioner, we signed on with petition to petition that from the town of McMillan, or to annex it from the town of McMillan. The Joint Review Board, or non-Joint Review Board, the joint plan commission with the town of McMillan and city of Marshfield did review this in January, which is required by the Cooperative Boundary Plan, and they did recommend approval of it. We took this to the Plan Commission last, two days ago, in fact, and the Plan Commission did recommend approval of the rezoning to RH 35 and attaching the property to the city of Marshfield. One of the other steps that's involved in the annexation is a review by the Department of Administration. They have reviewed this request and do find this in the public interest. So with that, this is a first reading, but I would be happy to enter any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Butky?
Seeing how with the virus around and not knowing when we're going to have another council meeting, would we want to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight? I think everything's in line, Josh, from what you said.
I think that would be appropriate if.
So that would, would be my motion to suspend the rules and vote on it tonight?
So your motion is to suspend the rules and vote on this tonight? Okay. Is there a second to that motion? There you go. So there's a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries eight to zero. So that being said, then, is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1429? There's a motion by Mr. Butky, second by Mr. Fire. Discussion, please, Mr. Whittle.
Thank you. There was some discussion last time we met regarding this, the fees that were involved.
Yeah, and the council did set those fees at $800. I guess that's a good point, though. I have not followed up to get that check yet, but we will, we will make sure that gets seen.
Okay, because I didn't see anything that I noticed here in the details that showed any of that information.
Anything further, Mr. Whittle?
No.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, then please vote. That motion carries eight to zero. Item L, request to approve resolution number 2020-08, request by the city of Marshfield to amend the street plan to show a proposed future right-of-way, which is located between the intersection of Peach Avenue and 14th Street and at the intersection of Felker Avenue and 8th Street, removed from official map, presented by Josh Miller, Development Services Director.
Thank you, Mayor. The street plan was a planning document that was developed as part of the Conference of Plan in 2017. That was really a tool to help us identify potential changes to the official map. The official map allows the city to reserve areas of potential right-of-way so that that can be protected from future development. And the street plan is just kind of a planning tool to help us implement some, or to help us make changes to the official map. So ultimately, there's a proposed future right-of-way that goes between Peach Avenue and Felker Avenue along this strip. If that right-of-way were to go through, that would affect 20 property owners, and a significant number of homes would have to be removed. It would be a nice east and west corridor, and I think this was planned long before the Veterans Parkway was actually put in. And at that time, that would, that made a lot of sense. But it's, it's, it would make sense if it wouldn't impact so many homes. But with the interest of selling the property at East and Hemlock, removing this segment of proposed future right-of-way is necessary to make that lot saleable, really. So this is the first step in this. We would follow suit with a proposed change to the official map. We did have a public hearing scheduled for next week, but obviously, that's getting canceled. We'll reschedule that to make those changes. But right now, this would basically be something we'd be putting on the street plan to show we want to remove it from the official map. Kind of goofy, but it actually, this is something that we want to do on an annual basis, review the street plan to make recommendations for the official map in the following year. We just haven't, with the staff turnover and stuff, we haven't had a lot of opportunities to make changes to the street plan. So that's what we're proposing tonight, is to modify the street plan to include this segment on here to remove it from the official map.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number 2020-08? Motion by Mr. Whittle, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Item M, request to approve revised job description for the Assistant Street Superintendent in the Street Division, presented by General Q Human Resources Director.
Thank you. As you know, Chris Holly was recently promoted to the Street Superintendent position. We are looking to refill that position. And as with any position, we look to have those job descriptions updated to make sure that they're accurate. In this case, the job description is included in your packet. Really, the only change is that we're going to make ACVL preferred for this job. It's currently not required or listed. Other than that, we just really kind of changed the format and divided out the requirements for education, experience, certifications, and licensure. So with that, staff is requesting approval of revised job description for the Assistant Street Superintendent effective 3/18/20.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the revised job description? A motion by Mr. McSwain, a second by Mr. Bargender. Any discussion? Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. How many people hold that position normally?
Two.
Do we have anybody in that position at this time?
We have an acting Assistant Street Superintendent, Phil Schmidt, currently filling the role.
We have one person, and we really need two.
We do have Kurt Bornbach, who's our permanent.
Okay, so we have one, we have a, an acting, and now we're going to replace the acting with a permanent?
Correct.
And this doesn't affect, then, any compensation issues?
It would not.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. That motion carries eight to zero. Item N, request to approve resolution number 2020-09, ratifying an emergency proclamation of the city's chief executive officer related to COVID-19 pandemic and declaration of emergency, presented by Steve Bar, City Administrator.
Thank you. I moved over here because the next item I'll be doing a very short PowerPoint on. You may recall that the mayor signed a proclamation two days ago, and that was an emergency declaration, gives us certain powers and authorities to operate in lieu of council meetings, some of the things that need to be done. It's being signed by, you know, mayors and village presidents all across the state. That's because, in many cases, meetings are being suspended, and even when they're still being held, they're spaced out in a way that you just can't wait to be able to do certain things. What this does is, what the proclamation did was gave authority to spend up to a certain dollar amount, $50,000. That dollar amount, by the way, was provided by us. Most of the resolutions and our proclamations I've seen across the state don't even set a dollar amount. The thought is that, I mean, it's just trying to give the people a chance to be able to buy supplies, equipment, do things that they otherwise didn't budget for. But we thought it was wise to at least put some dollar amount. So we have no intent as a staff to run out and buy $50,000 worth of supplies, equipment, or goods and services tomorrow. But it also gives us authority to continue to do business in other ways, close or curtail services of various facilities, that type of thing, as necessary to respond to COVID-19. What you're doing in this resolution is basically ratifying, if you will, the mayor's proclamation, making it effective from tonight through May 1, if necessary, depending upon what goes on in terms of future council meetings, or you're authorizing roughly six weeks. If we have council meetings prior to that, then, you know, we can certainly do business at that time. But that is the intent, allows us to continue to make payments of bills and payroll without approval by the Finance Budget and Personnel Committee, those types of routine businesses as well as the. as well as the emergency-type situations. And staff would recommend approval of resolution twenty dash oh nine, twenty 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 dash oh nine.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash oh nine? A motion by Mr. Fire, a second by Mr. Butke. Discussion, please, Mr. Chalk.
Are we canceling future council meetings from here on out until May first?
Yeah, I'm going to get to that in a minute. Again, I think we're going to play it by ear, so to speak. I'm not suggesting that we cancel council meetings for six weeks. I just wanted to make it, use May first as a date that if, in fact, emergency situations come up, we don't have public meetings because of what's going on with COVID nineteen, that we have the ability to do certain things. We have the ability to buy goods and services and products that we need to meet the needs of the community. And, but, you know, it may not be that long, Chris, we don't know.
Mr. Whittall.
Thank you. So we're authorizing up to a hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses?
I guess theoretically, if you put fifty and fifty together.
Okay. From historical span point, when was the last time one of these was passed?
I can't remember. I've been here nine years, and I don't remember one. I may be going back to nine eleven or something, I don't know. And again, please be advised on the spending. You know, we would come to the mayor, we would probably share information with you of what we're looking at. We just, we're saying, absent calling a meeting together for a budget resolution and these kind of things, if there's things we need to respond to, community concerns and issues, and they involve buying goods and services, that we'd at least have that ability, this is not going to be a spending spree by city staff.
Do we anticipate any expenses that would be coming up at this point?
I'm not aware of any. You know, there's constant, right now, our leadership team, which is the department heads, we have email contact back and forth all day about some of the things going on. But, you know, we've talked about a lot of health issues, we've talked about a lot of staffing issues that I'll bring up. We have not really talked about expenditures that would be anticipated, but one never knows. I mean, this is totally uncharted territory.
And would these expenditures be strictly city, or would this also potentially provide expenditure, added monies to police and fire?
I don't think we've even contemplated it that far. I mean, I'm not sure what the expenditures would be at this point.
Because I would anticipate they would have maybe more expenses than the city would in terms of equipment or.
They may well.
Protect personal equipment.
They may well. One other thing that, you know, we have put in for the fact that we put a marker in the sand with the proclamation the mayor signed, that we're eligible for federal and state grant monies, and we've been directed to track our time as staff and track the expenses we incur so that we can submit that when this is over. Now, will we get, you know, reimbursed dollar for dollar by the federal or state government? Unlikely, I would guess, but at least we can make a claim to recoup some of the expenses that we incur. That would include purchase of equipment and supplies needed to meet our community's needs.
It's worded here that such earlier time as a quorum of the council convenes, so if we meet again, say, two weeks, then that makes this null and void?
Yeah, I would think so. I haven't really discussed this with the city attorney, but the resolution says that this emergency approval and authorization would run through May first or such time as the common council convenes again. The intent we had was that what if we don't convene for six weeks? If they meet on April whatever, I would think that that would be the time that, you know, we could bring forward requests that would need to be considered for different types of expenditures.
Okay. My take is that's a little bit ambiguous, but I think, given the discussion here, I think you've set the precedence that is the intent. So if you get to that point and we have a meeting, I think you either have to renew this at that time, or it's gone. So just the fact that we had that conversation and the way that the language appears in there, I think that the effect of it would be that it's only until such time that the body meets again, and you could move to renew that at that point in time. So that's something for staff to keep in mind. If you were to have an emergency meeting for some other reason, we've reconvened, so if this is something that you still want to hang out there, I think we want to just reenter it.
Okay, and if we get to May first and we have not yet met, what's the process for extending if necessary?
I would guess maybe, I haven't really thought this through, so much going on right now, Tom, but I would guess maybe we maybe have to do another proclamation with the mayor to get us through to the next meeting and then do a new resolution at that time. And that, you know, given what we're facing as a pandemic, that's possible. I would like to think we'd meet before May first, but we don't know that. So to talk with the city attorney, take another look at both the proclamation and the resolution and see if that would be the way to go, is to have another proclamation that would extend from May first to May whatever, when the council might reconvene and approve another authorizing resolution.
And one final question, we have an election coming up in a couple of weeks. What occurs as new individuals are elected for positions? Are they going to then come in individually to council, to be sworn in, and then assume those responsibilities, or how will that work?
Yeah, I would think that would be the possibility. Deb, do you want to comment on that?
Yes, if we don't have the organizational meeting, I'll still send them a letter and I'll get them sworn in on that third Tuesday of April.
Okay, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Any further questions? Please.
Just as a cautionary note, I think the way that that works, that if you were to go through that process, and just, again, I have to look at, you know, maybe even the unlikely event, but if you were to have an election in the meantime, and then you don't get that person sworn in, the previous existing position remains in place. So that's just something to think about, and everybody on the council to think about, just so that if we don't actually have that person sworn in, you're not out of your position. By statute, you remain in that position until you're replaced.
Thank you. Mr. McSwain.
I'm wondering if we should not put in a provision to this that it would renew itself automatically for a month if there hadn't been any meetings. It's every month until there was a meeting.
I think in lieu of that, I mean, given what was said tonight, if you'd like to amend the resolution to go to June first or something, I think what we're hearing from the city attorney is such that if the council's reconvening, that will have to be revisited anyway. So not that I expect no public meetings until June first, but maybe you do that just to give a buffer to yourself in the happenstance that that's where we end up.
What I'm suggesting would be that it would just, it would just be a continual thing that it would renew for the next month, again, depending upon whether or not there's another council meeting.
Please have.
And I don't remember the specific language in that, but I think the answer would be to extend it the later date, and it would automatically have the effect that you're talking about, because based on that language, it essentially terminates once you do have a meeting. So if there's a meeting planned, then, you know, you're going to stop the continuation of it. So let's say hypothetically, you put it out till September, somewhere in between there, it ends when you have your meeting. So it addresses your concern, and all that would be needed is to change the date that is on that provision.
Or remove the date. Just say till the next quorum of a council meeting.
Please.
I don't recommend that, and I don't specifically remember why, but I did go through the various statutory provisions, and I'm going to recommend that you put an end date of some kind on this, and I think it has to do with the statutory language. I'm just going through multiple documents in my head, and I just remember that that's the intent behind that, is that you do designate a date. I think we have to do that, or certainly would recommend that, okay? So, I mean, again, if you put it out to June or July, I think you're fine there, and if you, you know, if we really have that kind of a problem, then at that point, we would have to go back to a mayor's proclamation. But I just wouldn't recommend leaving a wide open date. It's just based on the language of the statute, so.
Mr. Butke.
I would like to, so we can move on from this, we know what we want to do here, so my motion would be to make a August first, up until August first on this, and then it would cancel out when we have.
Do you want me to hit? Soon as you.
You need him to hit that?
It's amended? Okay. How's that?
So there is a motion to amend the end date to August one, twenty twenty. Motion from Mr. Butke, a second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion, please, Mr. Whittall?
Thank you. I will vote against that amendment. I believe that we need to have a council meeting at some point prior to that date, at least to get an understanding of what's happening, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel.
I also.
Thank you, Mr. Chalk.
Yeah, this is sort of self-interest. We don't need, this is my last meeting, which maybe no one cares about, but at any rate, I'll vote against this, too. I'm sure we will be meeting before, I mean, we can meet like this unless there are other things going on, but we're going to have to have a reorganizational meeting at some point, unless there isn't an election, and that's a possibility, too. But I don't want to think we need to go out that far.
Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. What's that? Is it a tie? Oh. So is it, is it tied right now? Oh, God. There's not enough support there for a course. I vote no. Oh.
When the resolution requires six anyway? Am I wrong? Oh, what amendment, I'm sorry.
So the amendment failed, so now we're down to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash oh nine, ending May first. And we already have a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, please vote. That motion carries seven to one. All right, item O, discuss and seek council authorization for certain emergency actions that might be warranted in the coming days, weeks due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, presented by Steve Barks, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been scrambling, like a lot of staff lately, trying to keep our heads above water with all the things going on, and I was just going to do this verbally from the desk up there, but I thought I'd try and put together a PowerPoint and scramble at the last minute, so it's not quite as detailed as I'd like to, but I'm going to present what I have right now to share with you and take any questions from there. So I've been looking at the city's response so far to the COVID nineteen. Obviously, this is a pandemic situation, something that, you know, just haven't seen. It's one of those things that is almost hard to fathom when you listen to the news reports, but it's upon us. The governor's mandate recently came out talking about, you know, gatherings of ten or more and a lot of other things. It specified, we have restaurants, bars that are closed, restaurants are open to takeout and drive-through, but our world has changed a lot, and we need to adapt to it, we need to be leaders. People look to us for leadership, they don't always look to us for the, all the answers, but they look to us to be upfront, working with other players. So the goals, as I see it, for the city in this pandemic is, number one, provide essential municipal services through it all to our taxpayers, provide public health, or protect public health, safety, and welfare of our public, they expect it, ensure the safety of our city employees. That's paramount in our minds here, because we have people who work very hard for the city, and we have people coming in here, they have, some of them have to go out in the field, we want to make sure they're safe and their health is protected as well. And then partner with community leaders. I think Bob did a nice job earlier talking about the meetings that have gone on so far. He and I have been there, along with people from the school district, the YMCA, all different agencies have been part of this, trying to pull together resources to address not only the health needs, but the community needs that are going to come down the road as we go from week to week through this emergency. By the way, before I start to go any farther, I'd like to say something I say oftentimes during budget time, but what a great group of leaders we have here. Several of them are here right now in the room, department heads, there's others that aren't. We have a top-rate group, we've had a number of meetings just ourselves, and trying to come to grips with where we need to be on these issues, and I couldn't be prouder to work with the people that I'm talking about right now, and all the other employees for the city. Looking at closing some facilities and restricting some, we've been sending these out by email. Again, not having meetings, we've had to take some action to protect the safety of the public and of employees. As I stand here right now, the Wildwood Zoo and Wildwood Station have been closed. Oak Avenue and Second Street Community Centers have been largely closed, that's why I put the asterisks there. I think Deb can tell you that the election is going forward, at least as far as we know. There was an effort last night to try and postpone it, that I understand did not succeed, and so it will go on on April seventh, at least as it looks right now, and Oak Avenue Community Center is a polling place. The Second Street Community Center is closed to all public activity, if you will. The park and recreation staff is still there, and there are still a couple of other entities working out of that site. The Job Center has been closed, but there are a couple of other tenants in the building that their employees are allowed to be accessing and using, but otherwise, those facilities are barred from the public in general. The Everett Real Marshfield Public Library has not been closed. I've got a little information from Lori that I think may have gone out, that talks about some of the things that they are doing, that they are still answering phone calls, email, trying to help people. The Wi-Fi is something you can still access, the public Wi-Fi out in their parking lot, but they are, they'll be potentially reducing staff, but trying to do their best to try and help people. Patrons can sign up for a temporary card online. They're trying to take those types of measures, I'm sure we'll hear more as we go along, of ways that we're trying to keep people involved in the library services. Public safety, the fire department has closed access beyond that front lobby, and they have also canceled tours and a lot of the public relations things they do, where they go out in the community, go out to schools, where the schools aren't even open. But some of those PR and those good things that they do, that they provide for us, are suspended for now. The police department lobby is still, is still open, they are still looking at what they might have to do with that, but some of the services they provide, fingerprinting and some of those things that they do for the public are not going to be happening. Both of these entities are dealing with issues of how to interact with the public safety, safely, as they go out on calls. Think about the ambulance crew going out on calls, and then the police and fire, you're involved in situations where they're around a lot of people, and they're exposed to a lot of things. So a lot of discussion about how they can be kept safe the best way possible, and of course, they got the right protective equipment, but what are the policies to make sure that they are as safe as possible? City Hall, you saw the sign when you came out, we're limiting it to five citizens in the main lobby, we want to go farther than that, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. And then all city-related events, activities, and programs have effectively been canceled until further notice. I mean, going back to the governor's proclamation, if you will, of ten people or more in a gathering, that pretty well rules out the kind of services and programs that many of our departments Staffing issues and considerations, again, this is a big thing for us. We're trying to restrict fieldwork as much as possible. We do have assessors that go out to look at properties, we do have building inspectors who go out and do inspections. We're trying to curtail that to the greatest degree possible. We really don't want our staff out in homes, you know, for the most part, interacting with people who, you know, may have been exposed. We've tried to do some creative things, we'll try and do more to try and maybe have inspectors be there when others are not in a building, per se, let's say it's a commercial building or something else, but that's a challenge, but we are conscious of that. We're looking to minimize our in-person meetings. Jen does a lot of conversations with people on benefits, and so we want to try and limit that, even group meetings that we have. We try to curtail that, we try to observe the same rule you're observing tonight with the social distancing to make sure that we're all safe. In terms of our hiring practices, we're ramping up on digital recruitment and phone and video interviews, rather than conducting these things face-to-face. We're looking at flexible scheduling and remote work options, trying to identify who might be the best candidates for that. We have a lot of employees here that have different circumstances, maybe it's childcare, maybe it's other issues, maybe a family member might get sick, whatever. We're trying to figure out ways that we can maybe make it as appropriate as we can and successful as we can for our staff, to try and get them through. They're important to us, they do great work. So we're going to try and be as flexible as we can within, within limits, to try and accommodate the needs that they might have individually. And then we just got word of the Families First Coronavirus Response Act being passed, you probably heard that on the TV or other news outlets, and we're diving into what that means for us in terms of what's expected of the city, when will this kick in, what will the benefits be, what do we have to do as an employer? A lot of stuff you can imagine. They pass it, that's great, but then the devil's in the details, as they say, so we want to get familiar with that before that's online. Going back to a question that Chris was asking earlier, no employees, to the best of my knowledge, have been laid off in any way, shape, or form. We don't. We don't have any intention of doing that. We do have some challenges as far as the safety of our employees, certainly some of the employees, take streets, for example, oftentimes, you know, work in groups or close quarters, so we're trying to get our arms around how to best make sure we can protect their safety when they're, when they're on jobs and stuff like that, but we will continue to try and meet and serve the needs of our employees. We have no intention of letting people go at this point. I know that, that departments, the library, I know it's having conversations about some of their staffing needs based upon the lack of customer traffic and so forth, but we're gonna try and handle that as best we can. We're committed to our staff. So the three proposed recommendations I wanted to put out there today, looking for your blessing on canceling all scheduled meetings of the council, advisory committees, boards and commissions through April 10th, that would be three weeks from Friday, it's not that far off. I think we may be going farther than that. I think if you're following the news, you probably figure that that's on the tame side, but we can, as was said with that resolution, we can reevaluate that as we go, see if we need to go farther with that, eliminating of meetings. We'd also like to close City Hall to the public starting tomorrow, aside from the election traffic that we get. Deb and her staff are doing an amazing job, given the fact that so many people have been coming in to vote absentee, not wanting to go to the polls on April 7th, trying to do as much of that by mail as we can. She and her staff have done a great job of trying to encourage that, mail out the absentee ballots and have them respond by mail, but some people don't do that. Like to get them funneled into here for the next couple of weeks to take care of that business and close off the front door to the public. What we want to do is get PR out there through Tom and others to tell the world that we want to do business by phone, online, email, whatever we can to try and meet the needs. Oftentimes, I personally, and I think some other department heads have one-on-one meetings with people that probably could be done over the phone. They really could, it's just that it's not quite as personal, but, you know, really the best thing we can do to clamp down on building in terms of trying to protect the safety of our employees, as many employers are doing right now, is to close off the building, and many municipalities, many are doing this as we sit here right now. And then finally, we have a policy 3.526 that allows employees to donate up to 24 hours of their unused vacation or personal holiday time to another employee whose leave may have run out and not be able to get paid for being away, depending upon, of course, what situation has them out of this building. So we would like you to kind of give some flexibility during this time temporarily because, you know, we'd like to extend it to this kind of circumstance, it doesn't specifically refer to this kind of circumstance, but to make it possible for that to continue for these types of employees who maybe have to be home with someone for whatever reason in this crisis and otherwise maybe wouldn't qualify or sickly for one reason or another. Those are the recommendations I'd like you to give your authorization to, and at this point, I would take any questions about anything, like I said, we have some other departments here, maybe able to answer questions about what we're trying to do, what the goals are, what the struggles are, and we want to work through them together, all of us as a team.
Thank you. Mr. Butke, your motion. Motion to approve the proposed recommendations. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fire. Any discussion? Mr. McSwain. Can you turn your mic on?
I guess I feel kind of cut off from questions. Though, I guess I got a couple of things. One is that I'm thinking that for the voting thing, which I guess I was kind of guilty of myself, that perhaps for safety, that there, if it would be possible to have like a table telling people to stop and that remove any gloves or stuff like that, and that they have to treat themselves with Purell before they come into the, get the voting things, because I kind of think I was kind of guilty of that myself, I washed my hands before I came, but I got my voting thing and voted and, you know, and I was touching the envelope, I mean, I didn't lick it or anything like that, but I don't, if we, if it's at all possible to get that Purell, I don't see any reason that we couldn't have something, you know, like an op sign, remove gloves, please treat your hand with Purell before entering, and that would, I think, give further protection for the, for the workers here.
If you direct that we can funnel people into this room for voting, we could look at that, I know that we've all been struggling to find hand sanitizers and wipes and those kind of things to keep up with the demand, of course, you go to stores and sometimes they're hard to find, but I think that if we could do that in the entrance of this room or in the lobby, for people to come into this room and work with the clerk staff, that would be a great idea. We're also gonna try and separate them in this room as best we can so that they're not, you know, directly adjacent to people they don't have to be near anyway.
And, and I guess the other thing is that, and Chris kind of alluded to that, both Chris and I are gonna be done, exactly what do you want us to do as far as, you know, if there isn't, I mean, obviously if it ends at the 10th, then we'll have, the meeting is scheduled for 14th, that's supposed to be our last meeting, but what are the expectations for us, if you'd like for us to do? I mean, do we have to attend another meeting, I guess is kind of what I'm wondering, is if, if it goes beyond the 14th, are you still gonna have us come to a meeting and then end it, or what, what's the?
I guess that's sort of up to you. I think we've adapted as best we can tonight, although two of our members are missing. So if you picture two more people in this room trying to make the social distancing thing work, it would have been even a little bit more challenging. I mean, I, we could certainly have the meeting on April 14th and try to spread this out as best we can, maybe even find another location to meet, you know, in the community center or somewhere else. I haven't really thought as far out as you're talking, I gotta be honest with you, some of the conversations that I've had with people in this room, Josh and Jen and others, everything changes nearly daily, if not hourly, so looking, and I think back to the conversation you just had about the resolution, some of those comments you made were good ones, they're things I haven't really thought much about in the midst of all that's happening, so my thought would be that you'd have another meeting before you were done on the council, but I guess I'm not a crystal ball holder. Up to you guys.
And realistically, things are changing so quickly, I mean, it's as though last week we were in a different world, so this is all quite different, but to answer your, specifically if there's a new council that comes in and they get sworn in, technically you wouldn't have to come back. We would share hope that you would, so you can get a proper send-off for the, for the service that you've done.
I mean, that does not. The hand off the computer is kind of...
Well, but you understand, I believe, that you are, you are entitled to get that recognition for the service that you, no, but seriously, for the service that you've given to the city. I would hope that even though you would not be required to or anything like that, if that were to take place, that you would, because I believe that what you both have done has been substantial. Chris leaving to go out of the, to move to the West Coast, he's a former mayor, he's, he's given a lot, I would, it would, I would feel horrible if he did not get a proper acknowledgement and send-off, if you will. So I think by statute, you, you wouldn't have to, we would just hope that you did, and I'm hopeful that...
I, I agree with everything you just said, that was very well said, I mean, given the service that Steve and Chris have given to the city, I think we definitely want to give them a proper send-off. So I mean, up to you when the time comes, do you want to meet on the 14th, even if conditions are such that, you know, a lot of other communities are closed and still work with the social distancing in this room or elsewhere, another facility? We can do it, maybe conditions will mandate that we ought to do it for some reason, maybe there'll be some important things we need to discuss. I'm just being honest, when I say with all that's going on right now, that's probably the last thing I've really thought about is what's gonna happen on April 14th.
Mr. Peschel.
I'm comfortable with meeting and, with that. The other thing is, the city, from everything I've seen and heard, the boys are doing a fantastic job, coordinating, coordinating all this, and that I just think that there's no need for us to micromanage anything, and we can just approve, approve allowing you to do your jobs.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, and, you know, I go back to reading the first slide that I hit up there about what we were here to do, provide essential services, protect public health and safety, ensure the safety of our own staff, and partner with the community to tackle this virus. That's what it's all about. I think you're gonna see in the next few weeks, I think you're gonna see this community come together in a lot of good ways and show who we are, and we want to be part of that. In fact, we want to be leaders in that, and I, so I thank you. Hopefully, we, besides taking care of things in this building, are trying to do whatever we can to be leaders outside of this building.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, please vote. That motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
IMP, adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, chapter 19.851C, considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data, betting public employee over which governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, extended leave of absence request. Is there a motion to go into closed session? Motion by Mr. Whitzel, second by Mr. Peschel, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. Thank you, we are in closed session. All right, are we good? Ready to go? All right, reconvene in open session. Is there a motion to approve the extended leave of absence request? A motion by Mr. Butke, second by Mr. Fisher. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please vote. That motion carries eight to zero. Item R, I'm sorry, item S, any suggested items for future agendas? Good point, good point. All right then, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Fire, is there a second? Motion by Mr. Bargender, thank you very much, we are adjourned.